Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Gail.
How are you, AJ?
Hello.
You know, hanging. Hanging in there.
Trying to.
Not easy these days.
Showing.
Hi, Terry.
Oh, hi. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Likewise. I'm very excited to see you.
This is fabulous.
All seems ages ago.
I know. And it was not that long ago. How's the family? How's everyone doing?
They're doing fine.
Good.
Yeah, and yours?
Doing well. I'm actually in New York right now, visiting my twins.
And are they in, they're in school up in New York now?
They are. They're at NYU.
Hey, good school. Nice.
Yeah.
Are they excited? Are they in class or are they online?
So primarily online. Each had one on campus. And one got canceled recently and is now online. So yeah. They're basically, essentially, they could have just stayed home, but that's another conversation.
Yes.
They're enjoying it though.
But hey, it's New York.
It is New York. They're living their best life, so it's fine.
They sure are.
Independent girls.
I mean, they're great girls. They're great. They're great. Nothing to worry about. Nothing at all.
They'll be fine.
Yeah, it'll be okay. I mean, they were raised by you, so it's okay.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, you know, you and my mom are very similar, so hmm.
That's why I adore your brother.
Fear of God works, people. Just letting you know. Thirty-two years old and still slightly afraid of my mother.
A little bit of fear goes a long way in parenting.
It's like fear and reverence, right? It's not like fear, I'm feared. It's like fear, I don't want to disappoint her. And I can say all this because she's not here right now. I don't know where she, oh, shoot, she'll come back. Um.
I feel like she was there. Is she not?
No, she did. And then she heard, her ears were burning, and then she came back. Hey, Mom, how are you doing? Hanging out.
Hey, Terry.
How are you?
Oh, my God. Long time no see.
I know. I love seeing you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. How are you?
Doing well. I keep up with how you're doing from AJ, so, but it's lovely to see you.
Lovely to see you as well. Hi, everybody.
Okay, this isn't about cheating, but we're gonna do that real quick. Um, oh, Dr. Bob. Dr. Bob is here.
Hello. Emma was right. Say hello. Emma is here too. Yes.
Oh, hi, Dr. Bob.
I feel like we need to give standing ovation to him.
Right. I feel like I'm supposed to stand up when I said his name, so it'll be awkward for my stand-up, because you won't be able to. Tell Miss Sam we said hi when she hops in.
They'll say hi when you hop in. Okay, she'll be back.
No rush.
Great to see you.
All right, folks, we're just gonna wait a couple minutes for folks to kind of trickle in, and then we'll get started. Also, for those of you who are on a computer, just to make it easier, please, on your top right-hand corner, there is something that says Speaker View. Since Dr. Scott and I are gonna be the ones primarily speaking, it might be easier that way. You're not trying to search for us, depending on how your grid is set up. So go ahead and click on Speaker View, and then we'll get, we'll get started in another minute if anybody else wants to say hi to Dr. Scott before we start. Now is your opportunity to say hi.
I'm seeing beautiful, familiar faces. It's beautiful.
So, Terry, Terry. Ah, Sasha.
No.
Okay, um, this session will be recorded. Uh, don't feel, don't get nervous. It's okay. We just want to save it for prosperity. And also, so I can remember the time that I got to speak with Dr. Scott, which is super awesome. Um, and a few ground rules, as always, because this is a session that is tied to my Lunch and Learn sessions and the Article Club sessions. Plain and simple, there is no knowledge shaming in this space. Um, part of the reason why I asked Dr. Scott to come to this space, because she is a historian, and what better person to ask questions to than somebody who has studied it for basically their entire life? Um, you are not expected to know a bunch of information prior, but please feel free to ask questions throughout, either in the chat, and we will get to it if it's relevant to whatever it is we're talking about, or there will be a question and answer section at the, towards the tail end. So if you feel like you're one of those people like myself who can't save your questions until the end, please feel free to put those in the chat, and we will get to them as we are able. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it. No knowledge shaming. Don't make other people feel bad. Um, don't make other people feel dumb, because this is a lot of history that all of us were not taught, or not taught accurately. Um, and feel free to ask questions. There is no such thing as a silly question. There is such a thing as a harmful question, and we will gently steer the question in a different direction if we need to. Um, if everybody's good with the rules, can I get a thumbs up? Also, if you've seen me giggling, it's because my best friend, who we on, is in this chat, and he likes making faces at me whenever I'm in serious situations, so just don't, don't mind. Don't mind him. Um, my mom will keep him a mom. We're solid. Okay, um, so, welcome to AJ's special session. Um, I am absolutely, wholeheartedly delighted to present to y'all with Dr. Terry Scott. Um, just a quick origin story. I met Dr. Scott in the fall, I should say, my mom and I met Dr. Scott in the fall of 2017, during our first pilgrimage, which BTW, if anybody would like to know more about Project Pilgrimage, we have the executive director in this space. Also, please, if you know, please check out projectpilgrimage.org to get more information and such. But Dr. Scott is the resident historian for Project Pilgrimage, and I think you came halfway through our pilgrimage, like halfway through the week, because you also have like a full-time job of teaching.
I think I can, yeah, if you listen.
Right. And then I was able to start asking questions, and boy, I will tell you all this. Many of you all know that I have an avid love of history, and this is the person who actually got me into studying history the way that I do, because Dr. Scott made history more accessible. So I am very, very glad to have a little bit of Dr. Scott's time, especially in the middle of visiting your daughters during their first semester in college, while they're, you know, out there kicking ass and taking names. Um, but yeah, I think that's pretty much how we met, and I asked you a couple of questions. You got back to me, and then you gave me your email, and then that's pretty much been it.
Well, and you asked incredibly fantastic questions. And so we add a caveat to, first of all, thank you so much for having me tonight, and thank you to everyone who is joining us this evening. Um, and to add to what AJ was saying about questions, as I tell my students, please ask a question, even if you think that it is requiring kind of a simplistic answer, or it's something that everybody knows, because most of the time, half the people also will be wondering the same thing. So please do that. And AJ asked wonderful questions when we were on the pilgrimage, and you know, my favorite questions are the ones that make me go, huh, I have to get back to you on that. And so that's the elegance and how insightful she was. So that was really wonderful. So, bravo.
That, that was really nice of you. Thank you so much. Um, so, uh, we got through the how do we meet. Um, I will be asking, um, Dr. Scott some questions to get us through this conversation. And again, this is a pretty informal conversation. We will be using some slides, but just to illustrate certain things that we're gonna be talking about, to help give a visual cue to it. But again, if you have a question, if you'd like for us to clarify something, please feel free to put that in the chat. Uh, there is no such thing as a ridiculous question. Um, also, the questions that I will be asking Dr. Scott are questions that I am curious about. And to be clear, and I reiterate this a lot, I am not an expert in this, which is why I brought somebody in to ask questions, uh, who studies this and like does it for work, which I highly recommend you all befriending a historian. It makes life quite curious and interesting. Um, so let's start off with, uh, the kind of housekeeping stuff. So what is your educational background? Because you are actually a whole doctor of history.
Indeed. Or, well, my ten-year-old tells me that I'm not actually a real doctor, but that's fine.
Yeah, children are cool.
Children are interesting, right. But she's still proud. She got my little book when I read it, when I wrote it. But I have a background, so I have a bachelor's degree in history from Arizona State, and then a master's degree in history from Southern Methodist University. And then I got my doctorate in history from the University of Chicago.
I mean, look, I don't know how much more history you can be than like a history, history, history degree situation. Um, and what was it about history that kind of like caught your eye? Had you been one of those kids that when you were like thirteen, you were like, I'm gonna be a historian, and then that was just it? Or you kind of meandered about?
Well, that's a long, so I was fifteen, actually, when I decided I wanted to be a professor. Um, yeah, I was quite, quite young, and I thought, I knew I wanted to do something related to either African-American studies or African-American history. And are you asking kind of the reason what got me into that? Because I can give you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I grew up in, outside of Chicago, in a suburbs called, suburb called Displanes. And so we were, my mother is, is black. She's Haitian, and my father's white. And that mixed-race family was kind of all the news in Displanes. People knew. And so not only that, it kind of created, it objectified me in a lot of ways. And so I grew up being called the N-word and other racial slurs quite a bit. Now, you know, I was taught, I was empowered to respond to them in a, in a, in a way that I would not have my children do now.
Dr. Bob, violence is not the answer.
It's not the answer. No, it's different now. But in second grade, you know, it stops it. It doesn't, they called me that once. But the fact that I grew up with that experience and having had those kinds of racial slurs, because as Dr. King said, he said Chicago to him was more racist than Birmingham, and there is a truth to that. And so I grew up in the seventies and the eighties there, and my thought was, because when I was fifteen, I read The Autobiography of Malcolm X, and it was a life-changing moment for me. I had always been an excellent A student, and that was the year in English I started to fail, because I started reading African-American history, writing poetry relating to it, after I read The Autobiography of Malcolm X. It changed my world. And so my thought was, you know what? Maybe I can work to dismantle racism if I can just teach people about the history. And it might seem, but I never let go of that. And so thirty years later, that's where I am, and I still feel that. And I think that that does come to fruition. I'm sure that many people on this call can, can attest to the fact that as they begin to learn things, it undoes, and I think there's a comment here saying that the word unlearning, what you were taught. So that's why I got into it, and that's how I stuck to it, and I just never faltered. I never thought, oh, I want to do something else. So even when my parents questioned me majoring in history, because they wanted me to do, you know, science or something, but they're fine with it now. It worked out.
I mean, you know, as someone, and I'm not saying that my parent is in this space. I'm saying if my parents was in this space, I think that that's fairly similar, because I may have been really, really good at science, um, and also I don't do well with blood, so there's gonna be no doctor, nothing in my, in my future. Um, and it's interesting you mention that, because part of the reason why I got really into history, and part of the reason I have these kind of sessions, is I was like, oh, maybe if we can teach the accurate version, or if people can be aware of the accurate version of history, then we can start to dismantle systems, at least within our families, and then our communities, and then, you know, the larger society at.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So of all the parts of African-American history you could have studied, is there a particular reason why lynching and leaguer is what you did your dissertation on?
That's interesting. So I thought initially that I was going to just do urban history. And so when I started my, my doctorate program, and actually my, my master's thesis was on segregation in Dallas, and the different legal and extralegal means that people used within Dallas, and in the state of Texas largely, to do that. But when I was doing my master's program in Dallas, I started to work for the Texas Department of Transportation through an organization that hired a group of social scientists, because we were investigating a cemetery that was an African-American cemetery, immediate post-Civil War era, and it was essentially forgotten about, but some of the local people still knew that it was there, and they started to expand Seventy-Five Central Highway, and it ran into the cemetery, and they started to move those graves in a very undignified way. And community outcry stopped that, and it caused Texas Department of Transportation to take in a different direction. And so they, out of that was born a museum exhibit, curriculum, and a technical report that was like a book. So I was hired as a historian to work on that. In the process of researching that, before I went to get my doctorate, I found a picture when I was at the Dallas Public Library, and I think it's actually one of the pictures that I gave to you. Ooh, that's me on that path. It's the one where the gentleman is slumped over after having been burned. And I wondered how it was possible that the people were standing around there, watching that, and waiting until he had burned to nothing, essentially. This picture is John Henderson in Corsicana, Texas. It happened in nineteen oh one. And they had just gotten the picture from somebody who donated it to the collection. And I let it go. I wanted to know exactly how it was that people were able to be there. You see people sitting in the trees, how it was that they were able to stay and watch that. And that became essentially the work of my life. And so when I started the doctorate program, it started with just a paper in a class, and the professor for whom I wrote it was actually a museum study professor, who said, this is insane. This is, this is stupid. Um, and so I set out a course to prove him wrong, ended up getting a paper, and the rest was history.
Wow. So what is, what is the leisure aspect of it? If we're thinking about lynch, because I don't, it wasn't until I met you that I even heard the terminology lynching and leisure. So what is, also BTW, Dr. Scott's got a book coming out in the spring called Lynching and Leisure. So what, what is the leisure aspect of it, and why is that so important for us to talk about?
So it's lynching and leisure, race and the transformation of mob violence in Texas. And so what I do is I look at how lynching, because following the Civil War, during the Reconstruction Era, and even kind of in the post-immediate Reconstruction Era, which starts in eighteen seventy-seven, it ends, most of the people who are lynched are white, and they're lynched for reasons such as horse theft, or cattle theft, or train robbery, and their bodies are found swaying in the morning, and the people who lynched them were masked, and it was very kind of privately done with small groups. And then you see a transition that takes hold when you see Black Expressions for Freedom increase during the Reconstruction Era, and then in that era after that. And it becomes a means of social control, but not only that, it becomes, oh, um, something that is completely racialized, and that there's a fanfare and a spectacle that adds to that. And so in my work, I chart that transition. And how do we go from these quiet lynchings to these very publicly viewed lynchings, where no one is held accountable, even when they are unmasked, and everyone knows who did this, and to where fanfares such as collecting corporal souvenirs becomes a part of that, postcards become a part of that. And so I look at how the black body has become something that is consumed as leisure. And so lynching is part of that. Before that, you have minstrelsy, and you have black misrepresentations in popular material culture, like salt shakers and postcards that show babies being eaten by alligators. And so within the context of a white Southern mind, for many people, black bodies became disposable in a way where they were either good for profit with convict leasing, or good for entertainment. And so adding that leisure element from minstrelsy and black misrepresentations into lynching was this kind of natural progression. And so in my work, I show how the black body is changed in the public mind into this idea of something that can be consumed as leisure. You ask, why is that important? Right? It's important because it devalues black life. And we see the lingering aspects of it today. It's not the only thing that devalues black life, convict leasing and other things, mass incarceration. But the idea that somebody can be lynched, and a community can stand behind it, and nobody is held accountable, is the early devaluing of black life that feeds into a Jim Crow regime that feeds into much of what lingers on today.
So what is the definition of lynching? Like, how would, how would, how would one, because from, from what I have read, right, the lynching of black bodies as a kind of spectator sport starts to grow in like the eighteen eighties? And, um, is it fair to say that because now black bodies were not enslaved and not used, like you have to, I mean, at the end of the day, they invest money to have an enslaved person, you know, held in bondage. And so once we have the end of slavery with the end of the Civil, the Civil War, and then you have a, you know, Reconstruction, which, to your point, you know, this rise of like black freedom and black expression, then what happens in the eighteen eighties that we start to see this kind of rise of, of, like lynching? Is that fair to say?
What happens in eighteen, yeah, that's definitely fair to say. So, well, two things that you hit on. When you say the devalued nature of black lives in that moment, correct. So previous to the end of enslavement, a black body was worth, let's say you bought an enslaved man for twelve hundred dollars, which is be about equal to thirty thousand dollars today, and you put a mortgage on that person. There's a value associated with that person. And so if the person tries to run away, or they do some other transgression, punishment will be horrible. It could be castration, cutting of an Achilles heel, boxing of the ears, removing of the nails, but it typically would fall short of death. It fell short of death because there was a monetary value on the life of that body, not because of a respect of humanity, but because the body was physically worth a lot of money. Well, once there's emancipation, there's no monetary value on that person, which is why I think something like that could thrive, and people would say it could be worse than slavery, because there was no cost associated. You pay the state ten dollars a year, or whatever, for a body, and if it dies, that's fine. And so in the absence of that, so you have the black life being devalued in that way, not being worth thirty thousand, twenty thousand dollars in today's money, or whatever it would be, you also have a Reconstruction period in which African-Americans did exceptionally well. You have nearly two thousand people being elected to public office. There's starting communities and businesses, often causing their white counterparts, many of whom own them, to be jealous, to be upset, to be concerned about the change of a racial hierarchy. But what stops some of the violence from happening in the South during Reconstruction is the presence of Union troops. And when those are removed, in total, by eighteen seventy-seven, as part of the compromise of eighteen seventy-seven, the South says, you know what? You can have Arthur V. Hayes as your president, but you're gonna leave race relations to us. They leave. You have a rise in Jim Crow, and you have an increase in the number of lynchings against African-Americans. And then you see a shift from most people who are being lynched to white, to some years, only black people being lynched in the South. And when you have no repercussions for that, it continues to happen.
Um, I would just like to remind folks, no, you did, you did. I just, uh, this is going to be a difficult conversation, so I definitely want folks to be aware that, as I have said many times before, if you are looking into your family history, right, and you have a Thomas Jefferson in your family history, like, yes, he was a founding father. Also, he owned people, right? So there's this duality that you consistently have to look at whenever you are looking into your history, especially if you are a white person. If you're looking into your history, like, yes, it's very plausible that you had an abolitionist in your family, but it's also equally as plausible. Julian, it's also very plausible that you have somebody who owned black people in your family, and that conversation has to be had at the same time. Um, so I think from, from a lot of readings, most of the people who we see being lynched are black men. Um, but is that, that's not who, that's not the only people, like, women were lynched. And what were some of the reasons where, um, you know, folks were lynched? Because I think, uh, we were, earlier, we were at the Legacy Museum, um, and some of the reasonings that I saw were some of the most trivial things I've ever heard of in my life. And I think there's a way to look at this pattern. Especially if we're thinking of Ahmaud Arbery, um, you know, he happened to be jogging. Uh, you know, Sandra Bland was pulled over, Tamir Rice was playing with a toy in a park. Um, in the, in the eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, like, what were some of the reasons that folks were lynched?
So two things. So let's talk about some of the reasons why people were lynched, and then when you asked about the gender of people being lynched, and mostly black men. So first of all, why are they being lynched? Here's the first step to understanding that. We think of crime as what? We think of crime as a static concept, that what constitutes a crime, we can all agree on it. There's a very conventional notion of what a crime is. If we say something is a really egregious crime, then we can all say, oh, do we agree that murder is a really egregious crime? Everybody puts their hand up. So we agree that arson, that lends to somebody dying, is an egregious crime. Absolutely. But we have to shed our notion of what conventional crime is, and that speaks not only to the, to the historical moment we're talking about, but today with, for instance, Ahmaud Arbery. So what do I mean by that? Crime is not static. In a post-emancipation era, black freedom expressions were criminalized. Blackness was criminalized. If you look at a composite list of why people are being lynched, sure, you may have an accusation of murder. You may have this. You also have voting as a reason of being lynched. White people are not being lynched for voting. It's blackness. It's a conflation of blackness and the, and the exercising of political power that caused somebody to be lynched, that caused it to be considered a crime. Marrying somebody of another race causes it to be considered a crime. Speaking ill, there's one lynching I talk about, where they put a note on the black man's back and said, he was lynched for talking ill, for gossiping about a white family in town. For any crime that in our minds, the, the Ida B. Wells Barnett, her friends, who were the very successful owners of People Grocery Store, were lynched because of their financial success, and because it impeded on the success of a white grocery store in town. And so crime becomes something different when the black body is involved in it. So when Ahmaud Arbery is jogging down a white street, and one of his murderers, his lynchers calls the nine-one-one, and she says, and this is what happened, what's the nature of the crime that, that the person committed? And he says, a black male is jogging down my street. And so in his mind, he's already suspicious, because it's a black man jogging down the street. And so we see the same concept of blackness being criminalized when we look at the patrolling of racial boundaries today. People who think they're patrolling the local communities are patrolling those racial boundaries. The man who called the police on those young men in Minnesota a couple of months ago, because they were working out in a gym in a building where they had a business, the guy thought, well, that's not possible. You're just black people in this gym. And so it's criminalized. Black expressions of freedom were criminalized then, and too frequently are criminalized now. Now, in terms of who's being lynched, it is, the vast majority are men. And so in, in Texas, I have over five hundred black people who were lynched, nearly six hundred. About a dozen were women. And most of the women who were lynched in the lynchings I looked at were women who were trying to protect their men, or family men who people were trying to lynch. But by and large, it's been men who have been lynched.
Um, so let's, let's talk about Texas. So for folks who are able, I definitely recommend you looking into the Lynching Memorial. Um, it, with the EJI, they have an interactive kind of website that you can go through. It's in the event page for this event, actually, if you want to go and click that and look through that. So we were able to go to the, to, to the Lynching Memorial, but, um, I think one of the questions I've, I've always had is, how, how does somebody, I mean, I know that lynchings were put in newspapers, right? Like, a lot of them were pub, public spectacles. Um, to your, which you mentioned that they also made postcards out of them, and people sent them to their families or whatever. But, um, you, uh, this is just some insider knowledge that I happen to have, you actually found some lynchings that the EJI was not aware of. Um, so what is, what does researching into lynching look like? And why did you pick Texas as kind of your focal point?
Right. So I picked Texas as a focal point, but then I kind of examined the concept of lynching, you know, broadly, and when I lectured about it, we talked about it very broadly. But I wanted to look at, Texas was, we always think of the highest number of lynchings in, in Georgia and Mississippi. Texas kind of fell down here. According to my research, Texas is third in the number of lynching African-Americans, and they're typically not counted in that number. So what the EJI has set out to do, the racial terror lynchings that they look at, they keep account of the lynchings of black people. And so other people who are lynched, they, they aren't keeping track of. They are very specifically looking at this racialized lynchings. And they themselves acknowledge that when they started this work, that they found about seven hundred lynchings that were a higher number than the consensus number that has kind of floated for many years. There were three agencies who charted lynching previously, and most scholars have depended on those: the NAACP, the Chicago Tribune, and Tuskegee. And so those are the three that people have always looked at. The EJI comes in, and they put researchers out and started finding more. And they recognize, I contacted them when I said, I have about seventy more for Texas, Texas than they have. And when I contacted them, they said, you know, send the names, because when you go to the Lynching Memorial, they etch the names of everyone who's been lynched in counties. And there's room, unfortunately, for them to add names as they find those individuals. And so, yeah, I have about seventy more than they have, and it's, it's just from paint, I mean, I've been researching this topic for about fifteen years. So I have gone to libraries all over the state of Texas, many libraries across the country, the National Archives, Department of Justice files, all kinds of places to find the lynchings and, and put them in. And then one of the things I do in my book is include an appendix that has the name, when they were lynched, and, and the mode, the number of people there. And then I tried to kind of add a humanity to them and write a lot of narrative stories about the people who were lynched. But the work that the EJI has done is unbelievable.
Oh, yes. Uh, I definitely, again, I, I know that I vote for Common Power, but I'm going to continue talking to you about Project Pilgrimage, because a lot of these, this, these experiences that I have been able to be a part of have been because I've gone to these places where these things happen with Project Pilgrimage. And, I mean, also, you get to go with Dr. Scott, which I think is pretty awesome in and of itself. Um, you get to walk through something like the Lynching Memorial with somebody who has been studying lynching for, you know, over a decade and a half. And so having that kind of expertise in that moment, when you're trying to like process and think of questions, is something that I definitely highly, highly recommend. Um.
And can I just add that I got to go because of Project Pilgrimage also?
There you go.
The same, right?
Um, one question that I have, well, one of the many questions that I have, so I was, I was, at any given moment, I'm reading about something. Um, I realized over. Um, I realized over the course of the last, well, I don't know, my mom has seen how my books lie and she has feelings about that. Um, there's literally books. Um, but one of the things that I've realized is there hasn't been more than probably two solid days that I haven't read about either the destruction of black bodies, the destruction of black communities, the lynching of black bodies, or something. Um, and it seems like one thing that I've picked up on is that, and there's, we talk about the Great Migration, right? This big flood of black folks that are moving from the South, um, you know, out, out of to the South, towards the North or even, um, West. Um, is it fair to connect the mass migration of black folks from the South to terror lynchings?
Well, I'll tell you what, one, that's one of the things that makes Texas, uh, very unique. So, yes, the mass migration of South, um, often when there was a lynching, people would move. So that, that's very easily charted, that, um, particularly like when Ida B. Wells Barnett started to write about it in Memphis, I think two thousand people moved. And she said, "Exercise the power of your dollar and take your money elsewhere," until people left. Uh, one of the things that becomes interesting in Texas is it's, it's, it has the highest in-migration of any state. And so what does that mean? African Americans in Texas were more likely to move from rural areas to urban areas in the state. And so they stayed more so than any of the other states. So they'd move from, you know, and it's kind of filters back to this concept of Texas almost where people still harbor being its own country. So they move from the rural areas to urban areas. And within that context, I have charted that there's an increase in lynchings when those people move to the rural areas or to the urban areas. And so does migration have an impact on racial terror lynchings? Yes, in two ways. Racial terror lynchings push people out of one area, but within the context of that state, racial terror lynchings increase when black populations increase and migrate to those areas. It's like a resistance to a black presence.
I, I just thought of like gentrification in a way. And I don't, I don't, I haven't like connected it yet, I just know that gentrification popped in my head and like, I know I'm going to be looking at that.
Yeah, you have to flush that out.
Yeah, no, I, I got you, I, I guess I know what I'm doing this weekend. Um, I got, I got a question, uh, from somebody who sent it to me privately, which I'm not sure why they sent it to me privately, because you could have sent it publicly, but also it's perfectly fine, I still love you. Um, the question is, uh, with that information, is it possible to also trace the information back to find out who committed those crimes? Um, because, I mean, if we're looking at imagery, right? Like, people's faces are right there, and like, people's names are in there. So, I mean, one, I don't, obviously, there's a lot of people who committed lynchings, at least the way that we classically think of lynchings, um, in the past, who have long, long since died. But, um, has, has that information, um, that you've been able to find, or even the EJI or NAACP or Chicago Tribune, ever been used to then prosecute somebody who participated in the lynching?
So a number of people were arrested who have, who have committed lynchings at different points, largely because in some ways it kind of shamed, uh, the locales, particularly when you got to the nineteen thirties and the nineteen forties, it became increasingly visible nationally and very shameful. Nobody in the state of Texas, for instance, was ever put in jail and spent time for lynching until the lynching of James Byrd in nineteen eighty-nine. And so, exactly. So all of those other previous lynchings, there were some where people arrested, nobody was ever convicted. Now, the question is, so, yes, people were arrested, they knew who they were, juries were refused to convict those individuals. The NAACP was one of the organizations that not only charted lynchings, they made it in part, their early life's work, to try to get lynching legislation passed. They would send investigators into areas all over the country where a lynching would occur and send people to talk to the local people, often white investigators, because they could maneuver in the public sphere much easier and not worry about being killed for asking about a lynching. And they would often, they would know, they would write to local government, they would write some of the letters I have to the Department of Justice. "We have the names of the leaders of this mob, here they are," and nothing would happen. There was no recourse. Often the recourse would be intercommunal. So what does that mean? That means sometimes people had to move or they had to pick up arms and try to fight back, sometimes there would be riots. Because, and, I mean, this is unlike the modern civil rights movement, when marchers, foot soldiers were not protected by their local or federal government, same thing then. So, yeah, we do know who many of the people were who led those mobs and lynched those individuals. And did anything happen? Most of the time, almost inevitably, no. I mean, look at him, we didn't find out that that happened to him for two months, because the prosecutor said, "Uh, I feel like they actually adhered to the law and they were in hot pursuit of a criminal." Until that video became public and that area was shamed, and the Georgia Bureau of Investigation had to investigate and then arrest those men. That's, that's a, a, a frightening parallel to the lynchings in the past.
So again, what is, what is the definition of a lynching? Because I'm guessing it has to do with something with the amount of, with like numbers.
Right, so.
So would, would Trayvon Martin's murder be considered a lynching versus what happened to Ahmaud?
No, Trayvon's would not, because it was a single individual. And so the legislation that exists today, that was, that, well, that's being held up, I believe it says two people or more. The legislation that was presented in the past and the way that a number of people got together essentially for a convention through Tuskegee, and Tuskegee was the leader in this, and they came to a consensus definition. It was a definition that was used on the state level and the federal level to pass anti-lynching legislation. It was three or more people who were involved in, uh, summary justice, mob justice, and it led to the death of a person. Now, people often think that it was just hanging, uh, and it wasn't. And so the picture you showed, for instance, was burning. Hanging or burning were the two most, like, kind of common forms, but people could be shot or some, in some cases drowned or beaten to death. And so three or more people committing this kind of crime outside of the arm of the general legal process. So that's what constituted a lynching.
Um, we have, uh, two questions, or like a question sort of, and a clarifying question?
Yeah.
First is from Marty, uh, regarding the in-migration in Texas, was the increase in lynching in rural areas or in urban Texas areas?
In urban Texas areas. And so you have people from rural areas moving to more urbanizing areas and towns, looking for jobs typically. So it was often related to jobs. And when you had an influx of people, I was able to chart an increase in the number of lynchings in those urban or urbanizing areas. And so it was almost a direct response to the influx of African Americans in those areas. That functioned differently, and I think Lillian had a clarifying question related to that, than from other cities and other places in the South, where, when a lynching occurred, people would often leave those spaces and go to the Midwest or go to the East. And then by World War Two, perhaps go to the West Coast.
And that was kind of the point, right? Like, we're, we're going to like scare you out of this neighborhood.
Just, yeah, exactly, to some degree. But then there was this complex kind of interplay, because they also didn't want African Americans leaving. I mean, Georgia was known, for instance, in Atlanta, for arresting people at train stations when they were trying to go north and then releasing them when the train left. Why is that? Because they're losing their labor source.
Because they're losing their.
Very cheap sharecroppers and others. And so they also didn't want them to leave, they just wanted to control them, and if the need was for violence and death to control them, so be it.
Um, Nancy.
All the complexities.
I know, I'm, I'm going to be digging into that at some point. Um, Nancy has a, a question. Dr. Scott, is the NAACP involved with investigation of suspicious deaths of individuals in California where hanging is suspected?
I actually don't know. I know that if you go, so the NAACP, well, the NAACP and the Legal Defense Fund used to be one. So the NAACP started the Legal Defense Fund in nineteen forty-two. Legal Defense Fund is who Thurgood Marshall worked for, and they were able to litigate Brown versus Board of Education, um, uh, Irene Morgan's case to, you know, and, and all of these other cases. Then they split. And so, um, they both, the Legal Defense Fund, which has worked a lot actually on some of the voter suppression things that happened, like Shelby versus Holder, is separate from the NAACP, but both still do this kind of work. And both are very open on their websites about current cases. And so the place to find that information, I don't know if they're involved in those in California, but the place to find that information is on their websites. And also to call them, you can call the National Headquarters in, uh, in, in DC, and they will definitely let you know what they're working on. So, but that's a great question.
I guess I know what I'll be doing later. I'll be on the NAACP website. Um, well, looks like Nathan has a question. Um, considering there were three cops, uh, under grand jury in the Breonna Taylor murder, could be considered that a modern day lynching? Or is it possible, or is a possible lack of intention a factor?
I mean, that's a great question. I think that's something that, that's up for conversation, right? Because we don't know necessarily, I mean, we can kind of gauge the intention to some degree or the dismissiveness of the value of the lives of people there. And so they knew who was in that home, they broke into that home. If we believe, which I do, the vast majority of witnesses, save the one individual who said he heard them say something, everyone else said they heard them say nothing nor announce themselves, that they went in with, with a completely, a complete disregard of the value of the black lives that were there. And so if we know that they know that those black lives were in there and they shot and killed those, that individual, they killed Breonna Taylor, then in many ways we can classify that as a lynching. That i, i, it has much of what we understand to be a lynching, particularly the absence of due process and the absence of conviction. And so we see that very regularly with those lynchings. And so the fact that the bullets that went into somebody else's apartment are now the ones that have caused somebody to have, uh, uh, charges put against them, but the bullets that killed a young woman don't matter. That's, that's, that's a lynching in the highest degree to me, where the Attorney General is saying that, you know, this is fine and we're going to dismiss this. This is not what's at action here, so. That one, that's something I'm still processing, because, I mean, that brings about, and I think for many of us, an emotion that, that, that becomes, that is the moment when you stop and think, damn. I have to be able to go on, because I know that change has happened. I mean, we have one of the great foot soldiers ever in this country, Dr. Bob Zellner with us on this call. And with all that he saw, he got up and he put one foot in front of the other every day and, and he continues to be involved in a push for change. So I find inspiration from people like Dr. Zellner, that if he can keep going, that with this, we have to keep going and keep engaging in this work.
Hundred percent, Dr. Bob, and you are definitely part of the reason why I am extremely intentional in learning accurate history. Um, because, uh, we all know that history is whitewashed. History is sanitized, and history is absolutely not, uh, a sanitized version. It's definitely very messy, it's also very violent, especially when it comes to black bodies. And so it is imperative for us to understand accurate portrayals of history, otherwise we're all just doing ourselves a disservice. And then we get conversations like what is happening around the death of Breonna Taylor, where we're trying to justify what happened rather than just looking at the fact that this is the death of another, um, black person. And for those of you who are not aware, it also happened to be the sixty-fifth anniversary of the acquittal of the people who murdered Emmett Till. Um, it also happened on the same day of the acquittal of Breonna Taylor's, um, killers. And so history consistently repeats itself, history is consistently telling us how we can do things differently, but also if we're not looking at accurate portrayals of history and if we're not looking at holistically all of the facts, then, um, we are doomed to repeat, um, in a cycle, and we are in a historic election year and also a census year. And so all these things, and we're in the middle of a pandemic, like, there's just all these things that are stacked up against us. And it's just like, it's, uh, it's, it's wild. Um, we have another question. Um, have you heard of the experience of white people coming forward with mementos of lynching to express their remorse of their family's participation in a lynching?
You know, I don't, I, I have not, I haven't had anyone come forward with that. I have had people when I lynch, when I, when I lecture, I lecture in different places across, across the country where they come and, um, almost want to apologize to me for some of the things that have happened in their past or, or some of their family's actions, but coming forth with mementos from their own families. From a lot of the interviews that, um, I have read and, and seen and people I've talked to, there's a, there's a current, modern day shame surrounding family members who were involved often in lynching, uh, or a justification, where, well, he committed X, Y, Z crime against our family member, so it was okay for him to be lynched in that way. But coming forth with the mementos in a public way, no, people are not very open about doing that. They may donate things, uh, to, um, different repositories, like a lot of the postcards that I found, but not kind of, um, doing it in a very public way, or it might be an anonymous donation.
Yeah, I don't see somebody wanting their family attached to, uh,
No.
to that. Mind you, I mean, I'm sure there's folks out there, like, if you look at some of these postcards, um, I was, I was listening to the song Strange Fruits by, um, by, uh, Billie Holiday, and there's, uh, an image. So if folks can, uh, see this image, so this is Abram Smith and, uh, Thomas Ship, who were, uh, lynched in Marion, Indiana, I believe. Um, and so this, uh, this Jewish man from New York happened to come across this, uh, image, and he wrote the poem Strange Fruit. Um, I believe his name is Abel Murple. Um, and then, uh, Billie Holiday got her hands on it and she sang it. Um, she sang it as a song and usually was at the end of her set, and she sang it for twenty years. Um, and whenever she was about to sing it, uh, she would request that all the lights were turned off. She would request that all of the waiters would stop moving and there'd be a spotlight on her, and she would sing the song. And then when she finished, she'd just walk off the stage and there was no encore. And she did that all the way up until her death, um, at the age of forty-four. And so the thing that's so fascinating about this image is, one, there's, I mean, there's a man front and center right here pointing, right? And there's people, this guy right here is smiling, and there's people looking directly at the camera. And so there's, there's, it's impossible for me to think that somebody didn't recognize a family member. And that to me is just, is, is bananas, because, again, this idea of, you know, well, that happened so long ago, or like, I wasn't involved in that, yeah, but like, your dad could have been involved in this, like, your grandpa could have been involved in this. And so having an understanding of our history and like how callous we've been with black lives, like, this is, this is the history that we're talking about, right? This is the callousness in which a spectacle was, was created. And at some point, I read even that, like, there were picnics, like, it wasn't all day, like, festival fair thing. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, people, well, it was often announced ahead of time. And so the newspapers played a role in it, where not only would they chart the details of what happened, very frequently, they would say, so-and-so black brute caught, will be lynched tomorrow at three o'clock. And so people were able to travel, I mean, trains created excursions, extra routes to take people from surrounding areas to lynchings. So, and then by the time cars were invented, lynching sites became spaces that people toured on Sunday. Just as Sunday was becoming a family holiday early in the twentieth century, lynching sites became part of the thing that people would do. So you see all of these different leisure aspects, that not just the collecting of corporal souvenirs, not just the postcards, but the touring of the sites, the excursion trains going there, the, the, uh, like you said, people going and, and being and, and, and existing and eating there. So, yes, these became spaces that people wanted to see, uh, as part of their leisure hours outside of work.
Um, we have, uh, we have another question, um, from Harrison. Um, regarding the extrajudicial part of, uh, the definition of lynching, can you elaborate on the role, roles of the Justice Department and the Police Department throughout history in condoning and carrying out and being involved in lynching? That's a great question.
Right, and so two different ways. The, the Department of Justice, all the letters that I find, when somebody writes, and it's, it's, it's more often than not, not African Americans who live in a particular area where somebody was just lynched, and they're writing to the Department of Justice asking for help. It is always sent back to them, contact your local police, that's outside of what we do. I never have seen a response that differed from that. It was always, go back to your local police. But what happens when you do that? Police were often involved in the lynchings. Now, sometimes police would have people who were lynched, who they were holding in a jail cell, and they may be overpowered by a mob. But very frequently, people were also, uh, police officers were part of the lynching mobs. And so that is the role that they played. I mean, we have to remember, when Jim Crow ruled in this country from the end of Reconstruction until the late nineteen sixties, the police in the South were used to maintain and enforce Jim Crow. And so it's not out of step then for that kind of policing, that racialized policing, for them to be the leaders often of the lynch mobs, and they were. One of the, at an organization of, uh, Southern white women tried to do, and the, the name of it, the Jessie Daniel Ames was a woman who started it, was to try to get police to sign contracts that didn't have any legal value, but contracts where they would promise to better protect prisoners and not allow them to be, uh, taken and, and lynched. So it worked, I mean, in, in her notes, she says that, that she did find some decrease in some spaces across the South, but it didn't necessarily work as a whole, but it was one of the attempts.
I will say, as a black person, uh, if something was to happen, the, the, like, my first instinct is not to call the police. My first instinct is like, I need to call my, like, my big homie or something, because it's, we've had many examples of black people calling the police and then the police turning their guns on the black person who called for help. So this idea of like, oh, well, you know, that person is just a bad egg or that person is just a bad apple. Um, why are we always getting the bad eggs and the bad apples? Like, that's something that we all. Like that's something that we also need to have a conversation about. Um, because if it's only one person, then it, it should be easy enough for that department to remove that bad egg or that bad apple. Um, but as Dr. Scott just mentioned, uh, we're also talking about people who participated in these terror lynchings um, for black folks. So the police doesn't automatically equate safety uh, for black and brown folks. Um, and I just, I want people to keep that kind of in their mind. Um, we have a question from Alan Zidane Draw. Um, she said, thanks, Dr. Scott. I'm gonna skip my name because I didn't do anything yet. Um, for this space today, uh, I'm wondering about the connection between lynching and the fallacy of black-on-black crime. My understanding is that segregation in our communities results in same-race crimes. Are there fewer lynchings in highly segregated places like Minneapolis or the entire state of Wisconsin compared to more diverse parts of this country?
Right. So, and just so I can understand. So can you repeat the part about the black-on-black crime, the first part of the question? Cause I, I feel like.
Yeah, 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 I got you. Um, I'm wondering about the connection between lynchings and the fallacy of black-on-black crime. My understanding is that segregation in our communities results in same, same-race crimes.
Right. Okay, yes. Yes. So I hate the concept black-on-black crime because it's often used to detract from larger issues of racialized policing and other things. We hear it all the time. Do you hear the term white-on-white crime? We never hear that unless people add it to it. And why is that? Most crimes that are committed against people are committed by their own race, whether, whatever race that is in this country. And so black-on-black crime is the same as white-on-white crime, but it is used to say, oh, no, look, people are hurting their own communities. And so thi- this idea of something of racism or systemic racism being part of policing is false. And so it's used as this kind of scapegoat measure, right? So that's why when we think about black-on-black crime, don't allow people to say that. Call them out and say, well, what about white-on-white crime? Because most white people are committing crimes against other white people. And so that's the nature of how crime is committed in this country. So that's the, the first part of that. And then the, the first part of the question was, that gets me hot. Forgot the rest of them.
It's definitely like my mission to like to get Dr. Scott to cuss in public places. And something that I try to do.
I know. It might come out.
Um, the second part of the question is, are there fewer lynchings in highly segregated places like Minneapolis or the entire state of Wisconsin compared to more diverse parts of this country?
Okay. So the vast majority, lynchings occurred all over the country. The absolute vast majority of racialized lynchings ca- uh, occurred in the former states of the South. So, or of the Confederacy rather. So the states that maintained slavery the longest. Now, remember, New York, New Jersey, they all had slavery too. But those states that maintained slavery the longest and then, then had a Jim Crow regime that was codified. And so Jim Crow existed in other spaces. I mean, you couldn't go to the white YMCA in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania in the 1920s and 30s. They just didn't have a sign up that said whites only. But in those spaces where Jim Crow was codified, it was part of the legal system, that's where lynching thrived. And mind you, there's no Southern exceptionalism though. Just because it existed solely in the South, the federal government and the rest of the country had to be a part of that. They had to allow for that to happen by ignoring its existence, by failing to pass over 200 lynching bills that came before Congress over the course of a century. And so the South didn't act alone. They acted essentially with a nod from the federal government, with a nod from the Department of Justice that said, that's not our problem. Go back to your local police and see what they can do for you. Uh-oh. I lost you. Oh, there you are. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I, I mumbled that. That's.
Oh, okay. Was there something that somebody said about the difficulty of learning this up high?
Uh, yeah, that's Nancy. That's gonna be our next question. Um, Nancy asked, uh, AJ, Dr. Scott, this subject takes a toll on those of us who are reading and learning it. Um, you're both diving deep in and putting yourselves in an emotional mental space every day, not to mention living life as black people in our present day society. Are you willing to share how you care for yourself uh, to keep exploring, uncovering and teaching the truth? Um, I ask Dr. Scott this question all the time, so I'll let you, I'll let you have that in first.
Well, I appreciate that, the acknowledgement that it is challenging for me and AJ to talk about this. Even if we're laughing at moments or smiling, it doesn't mean that it's not taking this emotional toll on us. And I think that's privately when we're talking and some of the cuss words and the less, you know, academic language comes out, is, is. Every time I, this is, this has been extremely challenging. Every time I find a new person who's been lynched and you say, oh, in this kind of intellectualized way, oh, this adds to my argument. And then I cry every single time. And then there are times I have to close my computer and walk away from this days because I can't, i- i- it becomes overwhelming. But this is something, and, and I've shared this with some people who were on the pilgrimage before when this is asked, and then AJ has asked this. When I, as I mentioned to you early on in this conversation, 15 years old, that's when I knew I wanted to be a professor and teach something about the lives of black people. My whole life, all three degrees are part of that. Took years to do that. I start teaching African-American history and I come home and there was, I felt so emotionally drained every time that I said to my husband, I have spent my life doing this and I don't think I can do this. This is just too much for me. And he said something, and some of you will recall me saying this, that is so simple but so powerful. If you don't tell them, they'll never know. And so he said, you're gonna have to figure out a way to be able to tell them and, and then remove, you know, whenever best you can, the pain from that. And sometimes that is, you know, just taking solace and spending time with my family and other things. But if I don't tell them, I have been put, I believe, by my higher power in this position to be able to learn from others and then to take what I learn and share as much as possible. And so now all of you who are on this call, you have the same burden that is placed on me, but it's not a burden. It is a privilege. When you have access to this information, now it's up to you to share what you know however you can with others. Because if you don't tell them, people will never know. What is the danger in people never knowing? The danger in people never knowing is they make assumptions. They fill in the blanks on their own. They say, what about black-on-black crime? They say other things that scapegoat people without understanding the true history of this country. So when you know, you need to go out and tell them. And so that's what drives me, knowing that I can help people with this. And knowing that change has come. I tell my students all the time, it might feel like this is terrible, but we have changed this country. We have made people create new moral paradigms. And we can do this work. I talk, I, I, I tip my hat again to Dr. Zellner. He has proven that we can affect change. And that is what gives me, that is part of my self-care and knowing that you can change the hearts and minds of people. Some people you can't, they're just, I don't know. But other people, we can. We can change them and it can be in acts large and small. It can be in talking to a small child or a neighbor or a relative. And so we all, and so that, that ability is what keeps me going.
Um, ditto. Yes, all that, what she said. But I mean, in actuality, that is, right? I mean, I went from reading a bunch of stuff for myself so that I could grow and I could learn to saying, well, what if I create an opportunity and a space for people to be able to gain access to this information? Um, because history is quite vast and it can be really daunting to figure out like, where do I start even with learning this information? For me, it started with a trip to the South um, to kind of dig in a little more. And then that trip completely shifted the way that I look at life, right? It completely shifted the way I look at blackness. Also BTW, I am Kenyan. Um, I was born in a completely different continent and we're dealing with all that nation and all kinds of other mess over there. But I've lived in this country since I was seven. And it's not like I'm gonna be walking down the street and a police officer is gonna pull me over and look at my last name and be like, oh, you're different. Like you get to go. Like that's not, that's not gonna happen. I don't look typically like what an African person looks like by stereotypical standards. So I need to understand that in order for me to live and to honor the people who've come before me, you know, the Bob Zellners, the John Lewis's, the CT Vivians, the Diane Nash's, the Joanne Robinsons, the, who, all these other people. Every time that I walk out into a space where I am the only black person, I am able to be in those spaces because of the people that have come before me. Because of the people who have laid, you know, laid down their lives and put their feet forward for me to have these opportunities. So Nancy, to your question, how I do it is I hang out with my friends, right? I mean, yes, I read a lot. It is really difficult. It is really, really hard. And also I have a good group of people around me who are like, hey, you need to take a break. I go and I hug my mom. Um, I will say that my mom's hugs are pretty healing. I'm trying to figure out a way to like bottle the essence. Cause I'm pretty sure I could make a good amount of money from that. But I talk to my friends. But that doesn't mean that talking to my friends sometimes is not difficult. And that doesn't mean that it still does not always like help or heal. But at the end of the day, I feel like at this point with the information that I have and the people that I have around me, it is my duty to not keep that information in my head and to share it. And also to Dr. Scott's point, when you know better, you do better, right? You can't unlearn the stuff that you learned during the sessions. Um, and I'm not saying I want you to go out and start a protest or start a riot or anything like that. But when your racist aunt or your racist grandma at the dinner table says something suspect, at that point, if you don't say anything, then you are just, you are okay with what is happening at your kitchen table. It doesn't have to be these super grand gestures. It can just be conversations that are started. Pull Grandma Agnes off to the side and be like, hey, grandma, we don't, we don't say that kind of thing in the house. Or go back and have a conversation with those young people at the table so that they understand like, look, Grandma Agnes is, you know, she, she's gonna go through the answers.
She's tripping.
But in this house, like we, or Grandma Agnes is tripping. But in this house, like we don't play that. Those types of conversations can be, they can start off as simply as that and then you start backing it up with facts. Um, actually, Dr. Scott, to that point, there's a question here that was sent to me. Um, would Dr. Scott share with us how her students respond to learning about the history of lynchings, um, given today's struggle? And also like, what, what all do you teach? Cause I think I forget that you sometimes also teach law or law classes.
Yeah. So I teach kind of a broad group of, of courses. And I'll credit my mentors, both for my master's program and for my PhD program, who are both very old school scholars. And said, when you go, and, and they, I mean, they know each other, but this was, this was not by design that they did it, you know, kind of collectively. They just both came from this philosophy. If you're gonna teach black history, you need to know everything. And so when I went through my oral examinations for both my masters and my PhD, I mean, they had me learn every. I think, I think I'm still a little shaken by all the differences to learn and from the West Coast of African enslavement to, you know, right up until now, all aspects. And so that, I, I mean, I can't thank them enough for that. And so I started teaching, um, particularly when I taught at the University of Washington, where I taught for four years before I came to Hood. Um, and I taught junior college for, community college for a number of years. Um, I teach a variety of things. So I teach a class on civil rights, black power. Right now, I'm teaching a class on African-Americans and the law. I teach sports class. Um, and so my other work is related to sports and the intersection of sports and race. Um, African-Americans in the South. So I teach a lot of different things. Uh, and you know what I mean? It all kind of ties together and fills in the blanks of, of everything that we essentially haven't learned or learned incorrectly in this country. And to the other question, I also watch a lot of the Real Housewives series. It's not my shiny. But it helps, you know? I could just fall into brainless stuff and.
Really? Real Housewives?
I know. My husband's like, don't tell people that.
Yeah, that's, that's what we decided to just like put that out there right here for people. I figured we just hyped you up about how you're.
Forget it. Can we erase this and erase that one?
No, no.
No, it's fine. You have to have.
We are gonna talk about this later because I just learned about this also. Meanwhile, my life's guilty pleasure is Planet Earth and I listen to David Attenborough speak about baby features. You're over here getting hype with Nini leaks. All right, you know?
Oh, no. Yeah, that one bothered, that. Long conversation about which ones I like and don't like.
We can talk about that later. Um, yeah, so if folks also have more questions, um, please feel free to put those in the chat. Um, we have a follow-up question from Rachel Bear. Um, I know that Sunday is a holy day for many white folks. Dr. Scott just mentioned lynching sites becoming a Sunday activity to visit. Is there any connection between white churches and lynching?
So, not necessarily directly. There are a number of sermons that I've used where white pastors in a lot of churches, particularly in the early 20th century, would uh, condone the practice and say, you know, we, we have to do this because uh, black men XYZ and, and we have to protect our, our white families. And so you see that uh, times very much. Um, but it, so I'd say that's to the extent of it. Now you, you, and you, you see the same thing in the civil rights movement where you see a number of white pastors who are preaching why civil, why Jim Crow should continue. But you know, you also have a number of white pastors who went against that grain. I mean, we had one who just passed the other day, um, who was a white pastor of a black church in Montgomery, Alabama. And uh, Reverend Grant, I think I'm saying this. And he passed just a few days ago at 90-something amazingly. And this is a man who, and we had the privilege on the project, on Project Pilgrimage, when we traveled to Montgomery of meeting him and his wife. And I'll never forget that she, they had their home or bombs going off at, at their home about five different times. And this was about two years ago when his wife came to speak with us. And this was because of his involvement in the Montgomery bus boycott, which demonstrates it didn't matter what color you were if you were involved in this push to get rid of uh, Jim Crow during the modern civil rights movement, you were subject to death or violence. And she cried two years ago because she said, I just don't understand, they just had a nine-month-old baby, how somebody could set a bomb off knowing that there is a baby in that home. So you know, you see that kind of lingering pain and, and, and it's heartbreaking. But we also have to remember those stories. And so there are those heroes who could have not done what they did and could have just retreated into a life of whiteness and said, not my problem. But had a different understanding and said, no, my freedom is entangled with the freedom of everybody else's. And to, to a, a comment from one young man, a white man who was in SNCC who said, I'm not free until everybody else is free. A number of people said that. So I'm fighting for my own freedom here, is what he said to his reason for going to Mississippi in 1964. So, so it's a complex answer to a quest, to a question.
Yeah, such is life when it comes to race. There, I don't think there's ever like a, pun intended, black and white answer um, when we're talking. Sorry. Um, uh, we have another question uh, from Nancy, which is actually a really good question. Dr. Scott, are the majority of your students black or white? And how do discussions go in that space? Is there material acceptance by white, uh, by the white students or do they push back?
So when I was at the University of Washington, the classes that I taught were just as diverse as the, the student body of the University of Washington. Um, and then when I am here, I mean, at Hood, we have about 20% African-American students. It's a less diverse space. So there are fewer races and ethnicities represented as there were at the University of Washington. But my classes are, um, it depends on the class. So sometimes it's majority white, sometimes it's majority black, but largely majority white in general. Um, but a number of black students will take the courses. The, I have not had much pushback from white students. A, I don't really take, I mean, I don't take much shit from anyone unless they are in my classes. And so I'm very sweet and Dr. Scott's nice, but don't cross her. So there's, and so, and I make sure that in those spaces, people speak. I wanna hear what people have to say. But I try to very much, and this has taken time and, and learning in my career, to set up a space where people can talk and I've had great feedback saying that they feel comfortable speaking, but we're not gonna say things, as you said, we're gonna redirect if there's, if there's some kind of an issue. And I, and I let them know early on, conversations and things, you know, from regardless of, of, of the color, race, or religion of the student, language that won't be tolerated in the classroom. Now, when you are teaching somebody, and this is with facts, like you said AJ, you, you have the conversation and then you back it up with facts. You back it up with statistics, you back with examples, and there's not much they can push back on once you start doing that. That's why it's important when you have conversations with people that you are well-educated in that topic or become as well-educated as you can. So the feedback I have gotten very frequently in, in, in evaluations, and you're asking about white students Nancy in here, is, um, anonymous evaluations, and I, many, many times, I was raised to think about Black people in a certain way, but now that I've learned more, I, I think differently. That's why I know, that's why I know that educating people on topics and educating and yourselves on topics is, is, is key to changing society.
And to be fair, Dr. Scott's classes always have a waitlist, like, let's just, let's be real, Dr. Scott's classes always have a waitlist. There's people always trying to get into Dr. Scott's classes. I've been trying to get into Dr. Scott's classes for three years personally. Um, but, uh, so let's, let's, we're gonna kind of start to wind this timeline down. Um, in your opinion, what is, what is a modern-day lynching look like, right? Cause again, I think, uh, just if I hadn't read as much as I had on lynching, um, on my own volition, I think I would also just assume that lynchings were like hanging, right? And not all these other moments. So if we're thinking about today in 2020, um, what does a modern-day lynching look like?
Right, so I wrote about, and I think you sent that article that I wrote recently, an op-ed, um, to everybody, where I make that comparison. And so I cite three modern-day lynchings, the lynching of Ahmaud Arbery in Georgia, the lynching of Elijah McClain in Aurora, Colorado last year, that didn't come to light until this year, and then lynching of George Floyd. And I tried to chart, and, and it was kind of a moment where I started to say, damn, this is happening now, these are lynchings. What do they all have? They all have an element of Blackness being criminalized. And so with Ahmaud Arbery running down the street jogging essentially while Black, that's one of the key elements. Elijah McClain, who was just getting iced tea for his brother and somebody saw him while he was dancing and thought he's suspicious, something's wrong, that was criminalized. In the case of George Floyd, he was accused of passing a $20 bill that was counterfeit. Now, whether that was true or not, is it something that deserves death? No, none of them had due process, none of them were able to defend themselves in the court of law. All of them were killed by three or two or more parties. All of them were part of this racialized lynching, all of them, the, the killers of Elijah McClain have still not been arrested, the, the police officers who killed him. In two cases, there were police officers, in one case, it was not. Now, I would argue that the murderers of George Floyd, without the video evidence and then without public outcry and protest, still would not be arrested, they'd be patrolling their streets just like they, they did every other day. But as I mentioned earlier, the murders of Ahmaud, uh, Arbery, they were, and, and you can write, read the letter from, I think it's Barnhurst, who was the original attorney general who was on the case, who wrote a letter, it's on the internet, who says, you know what? I don't see any reason to arrest these men, they didn't do anything wrong. And the only person he admonishes in that letter is Ahmaud Arbery's mother for asking the case to be taken up by somebody else, that's it. And so you have a lot, a lack of, a lack of conviction being put forth by the state entity. And so you have that element of it. And then you have another element, and that is the element of, in each one of these cases, the original coroner's report, just like we saw in the past, would not conclusively say that their deaths were caused by the individuals who did that. They wouldn't say it was homicide. And so with George Floyd, then you had an independent autopsy that was done that said, no, this was exorciation because of XYZ. And so they use the coroner's reports in each one of those instances, the, the, the lawyers in the case, to not press charges, the district attorneys, until public outcry in each one of the cases caused that to happen. But we're still waiting for Elijah McClain. So it has all the elements of these historical lynchings.
And the thing that's interesting, while you were talking, I, I was thinking about how, if you're thinking about lynchings in the, in the late 1800s, early 1900s, you had a public outcry from Black communities, right? Like, these things were captured, whether it's by newspaper, postcard, whatever, like, these things were, were captured. And if you're looking at a modern-day lynching, right, they're captured on cell phone video, there's a public outcry. And in both instances, for the most part, like, nobody was convicted, despite all of the evidence, right? There's this through line of, like, even if there are witnesses, even if we, we know who did it, there's still the opposite, I mean, still, nothing, nothing happens. And we're talking about 2020, with all the evidence that we can capture, with all of the visual aids that we have, you still have this prosecution of the Black body rather than the person who took the life of the Black person. So this idea that lynchings happened a long time ago, or this idea that lynching, you know, and that's something that we have to deal with, like, no, we are, we're dealing with that every day. And so this, what Black folks are seeing, right, I think there's a desensitization of, you know, the death of Black folks um, from the days of the 1800s, in the late 1800s to now, because I know for me, Trayvon Martin was my Emmett Till. I remember, I remember where I was when I heard about Trayvon Martin. And I remember after that, I have not really eaten Skittles since then, just because of what Skittles now means to me personally, right? I was young enough that Trayvon Martin could have been one of the kids that I worked with at Ring of Vista Boys and Girls Club. Like, I could have known him, right? He was like a young Black kid who wanted to go to space camp. I was a young Black kid who wanted to go to space camp, right? And this idea that you walk it by yourself, and I remember also after the Trayvon Martin death, my mommy used to tell me all the time, take your hoodie off, take your hoodie off, right? I love hoodies, hoodies are what I wear all the time, and my mom used to be like, take your hoodie off, take, mm-mm, don't walk around like that, right? And so these moments for white communities, um, I don't know how white communities process lynching, but I know for Black communities, the death of Black people becomes a warning, right? Emmett Till, don't, don't go looking at a white woman differently, right? Keep your head down, you know, walk to the other side of the sidewalk if you need to. For Trayvon Martin, it became a, okay, so now you gotta, you gotta take your hoodie off, right? And so I need folks to understand that, like, for Black folks, it's never, it's never just, it doesn't just stop, right? Every single day that I walk out of my house, somebody reminds me that I'm Black, good, bad, and different, whatever. And so I have a choice of how I need to interact with the outside world. I could definitely cower and, you know, be scared, but no, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna wear shirts like this, which definitely for my mom, I think is, is kind of a little, it makes her a little nervous, I mean, I'm not exactly the most quiet person, I'm a smidge outspoken, um, just slightly. And, and it's in what I say and it's also in what I wear, because I don't ever want somebody to make me feel like being Black is a mistake. Because for me, being Black is not exhausting, dealing with a white institution, white supremacy is what's actually exhausting. Because I am very, very comfortable being Black, I like being Black. I think being Black is probably the greatest thing that ever happened to me personally, right? And I'm not saying that being white is a bad thing, I'm just saying the institution that we are in, the way we have to interact with whiteness is tiring. And I have a feeling that if white folks kind of dug a little deeper, it's probably tiring for y'all too. I'm just, I'm just guessing, I don't know, that's y'all business, but I'm guessing it's like annoying to have to deal with talking about race all the time. So it's like, okay, well, let's talk about it in a way that its effects change, rather than just talking about it for the sake of talking about it. Cause personally, I would like to not talk about race also, I really would, but I can't because I have nieces and nephews. We're in a situation where if we don't do better by our next generation that's coming up, we are going to consistently be in a situation where Black bodies are being killed in broad daylight and it takes a hundred and something plus days of marching in the streets for us to get justice, and we don't even get that. Breonna Taylor was, I mean, her killers were acquitted. With all the evidence that we have, the bullets that we're talking about and the bullets that brought charges are bullets that went into a wall and not bullets that went into a Black body. So I need folks to be more comfortable saying Black Lives Matter, I mean, at the end of the day, right? Because again, when I was telling folks, think about me, right? Think about that person being me, and if you care about me even a little bit, think about what you can do, what you would want somebody to do if you saw me have the streets and having that happen. I've nev, I've, I've had one speeding ticket, I'm sorry, Mom, I have had one speeding ticket since I started driving at eighteen, and I'm thirty-two and I think that's pretty good. Um, also, part of the reason I've only had one speeding ticket is because I use cruise control in my car, cause I have to limit the amount of police interaction I am going to possibly have in a day. Because at the end of the day, me being pulled over is possibly the last thing that I'm ever gonna do. It's not about one bad apple, it's the fact that I don't know what this person is going to see when they look at me. And so the kind of talks that Black parents have with their children is like, if you get pulled over, you need to tell the police officer before you open your glove compartment, cause me reaching into my glove compartment is a threat, right? These are really difficult conversations, I understand that. Also, it is difficult to be Black in a community that wants to absolutely like kill, I mean, at the end of the day, kill you. There's, there's nothing we can do about that. Dr. Scott is married to a very handsome, very chocolatey Black man, and I know Warren's not, Warren's not there, also, don't tell him.
He's in Maryland.
Right, and so imagine what Dr. Scott is thinking when Warren is out of the house. That's something that we all, imagine what my mom is thinking when I'm out of the house. I know what I think when Julian walks out of the house, right? And it's a lot of times for me and my friends who are, you know, Black and Brown, it's not a matter of like, see you later, it's, hey, I love you, I care about you, I hope to see you soon. Because we don't know what society is gonna think of us, right? I urge you all to do some more reading, I urge you all to create honest relationships with BIPOC people in your life, and I urge you all to do better in your allyship. It's not just about reading, to the point of Dr. Scott bringing up Dr. Bob, Dr. Bob has been in this since the early sixties. And we're talking about a man whose family was part of the Klan, right? It, I don't know how white, how much more white supremacy-ish it gets than your family being part of the Klan. And so if you ever need an example of what it's like to put your feet in it, I definitely recommend you reading Dr. Bob's book, The Wrong Side of Murder Creek. I definitely recommend you going on and experiencing Black Project Pilgrimage, please look that up. And I definitely recommend you continuing to learn, because this history's not going anywhere and there's so much to uncover. Um, uh, so if anybody has any other questions for Dr. Scott, uh, please put them in the chat. But she, you know, she's in New York and it's like nine-something and she's got to go see her, her twins.
And I think a couple of, that is one of the beauties of, of, of traveling on, on Project Pilgrimage is we get to travel with those history makers, those foot soldiers and really, you know, learn personally from them and go to those very challenging spaces, right? And to your point about my chocolatey husband, indeed. So, and this is a comment, we used to live in Seattle and then we moved to Maryland and he, he grew up in Texas. And I remember he said, when we moved to Seattle, one of the things he liked about Seattle was cops didn't harass him as much as Texas. And then he started working in Everett and had a nice car, and he was pulled over seven times in three months. Seven times in three months, none of them was he ever cited. Now, thank God it didn't end in an incident where he could have been shot or killed, but one time a police officer said to him, uh, you seem like you did not have a definitive destination. That's racialized policing. For him, that one was mild, there was another time when I first met him that he was pulled out of his car in Dallas and put on the floor and they searched his car and they handcuffed him. Now, let me explain something to you about this man. He, which picks up homeless people, takes them to the store and gets some things that he needs, he's an angel, he's a wonderful man. So that shouldn't happen in a democracy. Those kinds of things where people, as AJ so beautifully stated, have to worry about leaving their home and being criminalized in some way. Now, and this is from people, it doesn't have to be a police officer, somebody else, this is just in, in a, in a society, we should not allow that. So we all have to do better, no question.
Alright, folks, um, this definitely, this will be recorded, um, so if you want to relive this or share it, um, I definitely urge you sharing it with your community, um, please, uh, check out Dr. Scott, she's on Twitter, I will, uh, Dr. Scott, you wanna type in your Twitter handle so people can follow you, uh, if, if they would like? Um, on top of that, um, this has been a very heavy discussion, as always, at the end of the sessions, I tell folks, find a way to decompress. Um, there's a lot of information that was thrown at you, there's a lot of heavy conversation that you, you sat through. Thank you all for attending, um, I have been looking for ways to get Dr. Scott into one of these situations for quite some time. Um, and we are in conversations to possibly do one on, uh, on athletes, um, next month, so keep an eye out for that. Um, Dr. Scott has a book that's coming out in the spring and also a book that's out now. Um, Dr. Scott, you wanna, you wanna talk about the sports in Seattle?
Sure, the book is called Seattle Sports Play, I'll type it in here, Identity and Pursuit in the Emerald City, uh, if I can actually spell correctly. And then, uh, I also have an author, and so that book is out now. Um, and I also have an authorized biography coming out next year about Coach Lenny Wilkins that I, that I wrote essentially with him. So, thank you so much. Thank you AJ for being incredible and for doing this work. You're, you're just, I can't say enough about what you're doing and how wonderful you are doing it.
Thank you, thank you very much, you have all got a sneak peek of the regular conversations that Dr. Scott and I have on a weekly basis. I'm glad that you were all able to participate. Again, please, 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 find a way to decompress, um, sometimes this information does hit you a little later. So if you are a, a fan of the vino, go get you a glass of wine, um, do something nice for yourself. But, uh, yeah, find some time to decompress, cause this, this hits heavy, um, this is heavy on folks', on folks' hearts. Um, as always, if you have any questions, please feel free to send me an email, we will be posting this on the CP YouTube at some point. Um, Dr. Scott is mad accessible, uh, if you ever have any questions. But also, you know, don't, let's not all bombard her with emails at one time, you know, rough them, rough them this way.
I'll take the emails with questions, no problem.
Yeah, there you go, um, and I hope you all have a good evening, please, uh, take care of yourselves and, uh, we'll talk to y'all, we'll talk to y'all soon.
Aw, bye.
Thank you.
Dr. Scott, you're a real one, you only talk one time, good for you.
I know, that's not bad.
Way to go, say hi to the girl for me, say hi to Warren. Um, everyone, uh, I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Love you AJ.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Hi, everybody, folks. Hi AJ.